So.
It should. I'll move over here, my phone's there. It's the only one I like. Work pays for hours.
You say.
Yeah. Now we got.
I find that out every time my grandkids want to watch a video.
Nobody uses it anymore because nobody's traveling as much.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay, Kristen is on. Text everybody else.
Might be your tribe might.
Might be what?
Might be.
Oh. All right. Um. One of the people online confirm they can hear us, Kristen?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, so we can hear you. Hold on one second.
This is Hunter, I can hear.
I think it was coming out of here and not out of. So which one is it?
Everybody.
Sorry, so you're on that. Your voices are. Are we good to do it this way?
Bike start moving.
Yeah, but press.
Press it so that the red button is lit.
Other word.
So you may need to only press when you want to speak.
Yep.
So what is happening, are they all on? We have Hunter. Online, we still don't have four that were here last month.
We do.
Oh, there were five of you last month, right?
Yeah.
We don't have Christine, so we have four of the five that were on.
Christine Sire.
Christine is not on. We, the Wi-Fi in the building doesn't seem to be working. So you're not connected either.
I gotta get my phone connected.
Okay, so positions up to communicate in this way. Actually, in Europe, you didn't.
I had an opportunity to do that. So I showed up, but I told Maureen that I was out. Away on vacation for a week and that I wouldn't be here competing. Got sick for about two weeks afterwards. So I spent most of my time. I had biopsies. Codeine.
So Mr. Chair, we are ready.
Sure. That's background.
Well, look, if we at least start the meeting by doing the. The announcement and the roll call.
So Berlin's own Board of Appeals for July 8th, 2022, a special meeting. It's about seven thirty three. We've got some technical problems starting late. The. Any agenda, I guess there's approval of minutes for page twenty fourth, June seventh, June twenty eighth. And I postpone that till the end of the meeting.
So I, there isn't a misprint that the next twenty four is, I'm sorry.
Already approved. So June seventh and June twenty eighth.
Because we're not distributed, so.
Okay, so we'll go right to the public hearing. If that's okay with everybody. Public hearing, CBA twenty twenty two dash oh nine, two sixty six Lower Lane, at fifteen dash two, block ninety one, lot seventy. Joseph Riniolo is appealing for Brown John Regulation fifteen eighty one, determination of the town planner slash zoning enforcement officer regarding number of dwelling units permitted at the existing house in the R eleven zone. Speaking for the. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you. Are you going to do the roll call and identify who was here last meeting or wasn't?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you go ahead?
Tony Franklin Joe.
Here but absent at the last.
Penny Tucks.
Here.
Ryan Madison. It's not here, absent. Christine Mizano. This was here last meeting, but absent tonight. Rory Winside.
Here.
Ryan Zalik was seated at the last meeting.
Present.
And Hunter Mathina was also seated at the last meeting.
Present.
Okay. What we're gonna guess, if we follow the standard CBA meeting, we'll have old business and new business. Our new business and old business, I guess what we're gonna do is, this is, there's only one item on the agenda for all intents and purposes. And this is CBA twenty twenty two dash oh nine. Anybody speaking for this application?
I'm ever since Attorney John Harvey, representing Lower Lane, now I'll see him, the principles, Frank. Giuliani, who was here with me tonight, and Joseph Ray Yell. I did speak with counsel, and I guess, understanding we have is, there were five people hurt this last time, but there's only four this time. So we're gonna proceed. And we're gonna leave the hearing open so there'd be no vote, so that everybody can review the documents, various papers, and then at the next regular meeting, I presume. Vote or whatever you want to close the meeting. Does the understanding.
Yes, so this is. This is Jennifer Capoli, your counsel. So I did speak to Attorney Harvey, because we did again have five members last time, we don't have the same five members tonight. So the thought is to keep it open, because by statute, in order to. In order for the applicant on the appeal to have the benefit of. You know, the full board, because four of you do have to agree in order to reverse the decision. So we want to give him that opportunity as a courtesy. So I don't, I don't believe that staff is planning on bonusing your next regular meeting. We were going forward with this meeting tonight as a special meeting for July, right?
No, I have, I have noticed a meeting or an application, another application that we had, so maybe we should notice for that. It may not be a complete application.
I will not be here. I leave Friday for the meeting.
So I guess with that being said, if Attorney Ward, Attorney Harvey, and his client were to afford on Tuesday with the continuation. We would for certain need the chairman to get up to speed on what occurred in the last meetings or the last regular meeting on June twenty eighth. Would review the record for this application, but we would also need Christine as well as the other three members aside from Mr. Tucks.
That you have.
To be in the session. Yeah, so.
Good.
So we'll figure that out. We're gonna have to figure that out for you, whether or not it makes sense for you to come back next Tuesday.
What's next Tuesday?
Well, the regular meeting is next Tuesday, because this is a special meeting for that.
So we have good people who aren't here tonight, next Tuesday.
Well, we want to make sure that we have again five members for you that have, you know, have familiarity with both lanes of public hearing. So, you know, we'll get that figured out as best as we can. If we can't confirm anything, what happens is, then we put you off to August. I think that makes the most sense. Again, and we do this as a courtesy, right? Oh, there is no August. No schedule about.
I thought it was no meeting scheduled for July and August.
We switched from no meeting scheduled in July to no meeting scheduled in August, because far on the first. The last week of August, the meeting again, from not considering.
So we have eleven meetings. Three more meetings.
Ten, we don't have December either.
Okay, all right, that's the one. Thanks.
I think my issue is next Tuesday, I was supposed to be out of state.
Okay, well, then we'll figure out, we'll figure out the next day. Well, if you give him the option. I mean, if you don't, if you're not concerned with just proceeding with the four people that were here last time tonight, that's the other option that you have. Because we have, you know, four of the five members, aside from the chair, the rest of the members that are here tonight were here last time, and they heard everything.
So the two of those people and the one person who remounts to four or five?
Yeah, Mr. Mathina.
Anyway, after we, after I finish, maybe I'll tell my clients.
Yeah, I think that you should have that conversation.
Yeah, I think so.
Let us know. Okay, thank you.
All right, well, Attorney John Harvey, representing the owners of two sixty six Lower Lane, and I did give to Maureen today a list of additional exhibits, I mean, the last thing you want. But in any event. My concern like for tonight would be the person who's not here has not seen this. So I'll quickly go through them, and then I guess, so let me back up a little bit. So you're saying in theory, we can even vote on this tonight?
Well, I think that we would need to get this scanned, so that Mr. Mathina could take a look at it.
That happen tonight?
And maybe we could take a break to do that after you present or.
Okay.
Would you prefer that if you scan now?
They keep moving, and it was a scan.
No, Damon is up, and she does not need help because of the scan.
Okay, so I'm trying to tell you right off the bat, I'm not happy about getting this stuff, again, a lap full of information dropped at our lap. At the fifth hour of the meeting. In any event. The last meeting, there were several exhibits which are summarized in Maureen, in one Maureen's documents, which we have. Which basically talks about those photographs of the property and the subdivision application from ninety eight, the deeds, et cetera. And those are presented at the last meeting. Now, in terms of what you're seeing tonight, it's just a little clarification, I think there was some concern about, was this. Some of the assessors cards read as if this was a single family that was added on. And so if you look at exhibit one, there's a series of photographs that show the stairs to the three units, the interior stairs. And. Five pages. To clarify, if you look at that, I think it confirms that this house was built on one spook. And then the other two exhibits, one is the field cards that you did not have last time, but they were from the MLS listing. And the town of Berlin website, which shows that in July of two thousand, it was not closing, and the property was indicated as a three family. March of two thousand seven, when my clients bought it, again, indication it was a three family. And the town of Berlin card from December of two thousand twenty one indicating a three family. The only change was in March of two thousand twenty two, the index of the Berlin property card indicated it was a two family, as per zoning, even though it did show up at the C of three. That's, I think, what happened when the zoning enforcement officer and/or the planner was approached about, I wasn't a two or three family. There's also photographs of electric meters. Admitted on this, Frank will talk about. There's also a. That would be helpful, a summary of what I think this case is all about, brief summary, which I'll, I'm not gonna repeat verbatim, but I think there's two major issues. Is this a three family house that existed part of its own? One of the assessors cards was built in nineteen forty or early in the forties, before zoning came into effect. I don't think there's anything in this record that supports anything to the contrary. Don't assume that that issue sort of speaks for itself. And then the other issue that I think is a lynchpin of this case, is was the three family use abandoned by voluntary discontinuance by virtue of the subdivision plan filed in nineteen ninety eight. And that's in the previous exhibits, our exhibit number three, and this also one where. And I'm referencing now the. Connecticut statutes, which I believe controls this matter. I don't want to repeat it verbatim, but it does say that nonconforming uses do not feed the theme laws unless they're abandoned. Unless the property owner is such use building or structure voluntarily, voluntarily discontinues the use, and such that it's continued, such discontinuance is accompanied by an intent not to reestablish these. Our position has never changed from three family. And I would respectfully request that if you look at exhibit five on the list that Maureen was prepared to prepare. This is a text message to myself and David Saroyes. He was one of the signatories to the subdivision application in nineteen ninety eight, confirming that he actually, he lived in the third floor, and he lived there from ninety eight to two thousand after the approval. Which respectfully, submit has continued until today, indicating that the intent of the owners, Mr. Saroyes and subsequent owners, before and after the subdivision approval, was to continue with the three family use. I think that one of the other exhibits indicates that the Saroyes is who won the property in ninety seven, the subdivision approved in two thousand ninety eight, and sold it in two thousand. The, I'm gonna postpone the legal argument, because I wanted to just quickly make some comments to Maureen's exhibits. Now I'll try and summarize it, and presumably, Maureen will give you her take on all of them. Maureen had given you a list of twenty one exhibits, which I think you've seen from the prior hearing. That's the comment about five of them. And I'm assuming you have the refer to you, but if you don't, I guess for that, listen to me. But exhibit number one, there's notes, I guess, some research was done by staff. And. Could it could not be correct. And one of the notes on that exhibit one was could not determine the existence, three family. We, it's just like it was abandoned for two families, but not determined. That's exhibit number one. Exhibit number three is an assessor's card, so these are from Maureen, so let's now show off, that stated two thousand eighteen. And indicating three families. References the split nineteen ninety. And there's a handwritten note on there, which I think came after this matter started, in terms of the use. Exhibit four is the assessors card from nineteen ninety six, again. I think I alluded to this early on, it talks about one family, two conversion, if you look at the bottom of that exhibit. Where that came from, why that's there, I have no idea, but it also confirms it was built in nineteen forty, and it was a three family, and remains a three family. Why they did that, or the assessor did that, I would submit is not determinative of the intent of the property owners. Now, exhibit six is a list of. Various cards from this town file, assessor cards, all indicating, mind you, three family use, meaning from before and after subdivision approval in ninety eight. Exhibit eight is another. Research on a figure of issue by the town staff. And if you read those notes. Talks about ninety eight card, plus it's a two family, in the case, three family, is either extinguished or found to be illegal. I don't see anything to support that at all, that was an assumption made by staff. Again, assessors' cards don't control the intent of the property owner. Of some importance, in my view, is according to exhibit number thirteen, which is a copy of their file, I believe, that's a statement, but. The second item, something that gives me a little concern, which is a note, was like a posted note, and reads Corporation Council agrees, concurs. So quite frankly, if we're gonna rely upon the Corporation Council, we need more than this posted note. In an opinion, yes, understand the facts, yes, and yes, articulate the law, if the commission so desires. And for us to get stuck with that one liner, I think is not only unfair, but in very complete as to what the law is concerning continued use of three, of nonconforming use. Exhibit nineteen talks about. Maureen's exhibit, that the bottom says the assessor's card indicates it was renovated and was single family. Again, I would direct your attention to those floors of the stairs and the numerous assessor cards that seem to be part of the contrary. And exhibit eighteen, the assessor's card from late two thousand twenty, two thousand, I'm sorry, January, two thousand twenty, this year, indicating it's a three family. And the final two exhibits were. From Maureen, out of twenty and twenty one were fine letters outlining our position. And Maureen's position is that the, speaking for her position, I believe, is because of the map was filed in nineteen ninety eight, indicating a two family next door, that. That meant that the owners were voluntarily giving up the three family use. And I think it's controlled by A to the Connecticut statutes, and the intent of the prevent property owner, subject to property owners, to keep the property as a three family. If you go back to my legal argument here at the end of the road. As we've talked about, the statute particularly controls this, we've talked about intent, which really controls this. There was a case in January of this year, Sister versus Madison Beach Hotel, cited in my memorandum. It reads that in both cases, involving one of the owner of a nonconforming property does the same right as any other taxpayer, taxpaying citizen who files an appropriate application to utilize land for permitted use. In that case, the hotel, Madison Beach Hotel, you own or releasing adjacent property, and they wanted to have concerts or something, and that was permitted in that zone. And the relevance I see to that case is, even though that was an expansion of a nonconforming use case. Irrelevance is, same thing happened in nineteen ninety eight. The Saroyes's own piece of land, they had the legal ability to carve out a conforming lot, which they did, and got approval by the planning of zoning commission for a subdivision. It has nothing to do with the use of the adjacent property. Why, why the engineer who was deceased listed two family, we'll never really know. But it's, I respectfully would submit, it's irrelevant, given the mandate of A dash two, the intent of the property owners, which has been consistent for, it's eighty plus years. So that is pretty much what we're saying in terms of. So that is pretty much what we're saying in terms of why we think that Maureen's decision be reversed, gained incorrect, and the assessor's record should be changed accordingly. Now, absent any questions of myself, I think Frank, man, would like to say a few words. He's the principal of the, when we're laying out, let's see.
How you doing? Frank Julial, I'm a resident of Berlin, so familiar with the town. I just wanted to give a couple of brief synapses, what first transpired in the first. Okay, so back, I remember some, I apologize, I don't have all the dates. Then we had a contract to sell the property. At the time, the lender for that first buyer was told that it was not a three family. And then there was, although the field cards, taxpayers, tax information, it's all true. By the way, we did it as a three family, taxes on the house as a three family since we bought it in two thousand seven. So I spoke at Maureen's prior zoning official to Maureen, sorry, I apologize. My conversation was that it was never a three family. And it was built in the nineteen forties, early forties, zoning didn't come into nineteen mid forties. And when I spoke there, she said to me, well, find me some evidence that it wasn't three family. And she actually directed me to call utility companies. Find out if I call the gas company, electric company, I even call the post office to find out if there was records prior to show that it was three family. All all the companies, everybody said the same thing, the township had the records for that. Now, just for the things, the house has three separate meters, well, three floors plus an owner's meters, which we put in much later in the required to. It has three separate water heaters, it has three separate washer and dryer. And what she was most surprised about, I said to her, I said, it has three separate heat breasts, front and back, that lead to a main stairwell, that's what those pictures are showing, that lead to a main stairwell that, and now I own the property, I have owned the property talent, that most of them are all two families. You can see where the conversion was made. And so I'm familiar with conversions on a lot of these houses. I still own one that has a common doorway between the two that's blocked off. This house was clearly built as a three family. Right? There's no evidence showing that it was converted from a one family, two family. First and second floor are all identical. They all have separate kitchens, all three floors, all three floors have separate bathrooms. So it was always built as a three family. So when I went back to her and I gave her all these facts, she said to me, well, try to find a home inspector, they can go back and check the ROMEX. She says the ROMEX has data in there. So, okay, at that point, we were, we've been through the last few years, and I think Attorney Harvey has sent the letter from the fire marshal. Steve Wasner, and we've been working with them to, because he contacted us a few years back and we needed to update the house because it was a three family, anything three family above had to be updated to cover. So we've been working with them and we've been updating it certain parts. And and there's a letter from Steve Wasner that says that. He also went back and he found the land records nineteen fifty six, that it was listed as a three family. So how, and I, when I went back to this person, I get apologize to me, I said to her, here's the facts. She says it was never a three family, it's not zone for three family, it's only a zone for two families. But it was pre-existing to zoning. I didn't follow the home inspector, because I did, I felt that stuck into Steve Wasner. And I also spoke to another town member who works for the town, who's been in the town for years. He also refers as a three family. There's never been a two family. Okay, so, you know, town records, field cards, which are real estate, should be bought as a three family two thousand seven, it was sold as a three family in two thousand. Okay, prior to that, it was on the town records, town records showing that it was a three family. Okay, up until this past March, when it was changed, it was always listed as a three family. Town records shows a three family. That assessors, three family, field card, people, fire marshal recognizes a three family. I mean, also, we're just, you know, we're asking that it remain as a non-conforming three family. It was and should be a three family. So we have pictures of all the meters, the way the house is built. And I had welcomed, and I spoke to the first planner, zoning officer. I had asked, invited her, if you guys come out and look at it and see how it was built. There is definite, definite evidence it was built as a three family. It was never built as a two family, or somehow that back when someone got put into place. That area, although I know Wethamton Ridge, about a mile away, there's a four family. There's a couple of three families, and I don't know how the zone is broken out. And those are converted from single family houses. You can see the conversion, because I I looked at a property out there many years ago, you could see where it common staircases. I own property in town, I own Bargain Avenue, you could see where it was converted. Roland Street, which I sold two years back, that was a converted, you could see the difference. This was definitely clear that it was a three family. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Okay, so that's our presentation again, by Sanlit of Maureen, which is inherited to the twenty, I believe, twenty out there. So property right is a vested right protected by the statute. And you just can't, in my view, during the history and the intent of the property owners up until today. Thanks for your time.
So I'd like to now proceed with the determination made by the zoning office. This morning speaking, zoning enforcement officer and town planner. I'm going to repeat some of the information that you've already heard and some of it with a slightly different explanation than you've heard as to the significance of the information that you reviewed and have been told about. So brief history, the house was apparently built before zoning. Therefore, there's no information on the original conditions. The art of the card, the assessors card indicates nineteen forty before the building department records. It was part of a much larger parcel, adjacent, same name appears, and new road and neighborhood were created to the north and the west. By the nineteen sixty six assessors card, the oldest that we don't have to go into cold storage or down in a basement and dig, listed it as a three family structure. As the CEO, it takes no exception to the structure having been a three family until the nineteen ninety eight subdivision. Facts are that the property is in the R eleven zone, which is currently a single bin family zone requiring eleven thousand two hundred fifty square feet per lot. Until twenty twenty, until two thousand and three, the R eleven zone allowed for two family uses with a minimum lot size of fifteen thousand square foot. In nineteen ninety eight, the owner of the property, the owner, filed for subdivision approval with a plan, with a map plan. It showed benefiting from the division would absolutely profit from the sale of a separate building lot. And that application included plans that showed the house at two sixty six lower lane labeled as a two family. Submitted, reviewed, and filed map shows compliant lot sizes for the labeled existing two family and the proposed new single family size plot. Rather, the two family and the proposed new lot. So they would have had to have, they would have been allowed a smaller lot size if it was a single family. Bigger lot size for a two family. The plan was approved and it was submitted for filing on the land records. With the owner, you know, the owner allows something to be filed on the land records with regard to their property and is recorded on the land records as map three zero four one and three zero six nine. And those are in your comments. This action, the application, shows the intent to abandon the three family by that property owner, the person who owned the property. To create conforming lots and uses for the purpose of the subdivision and the ability to erect a separate single family dwelling on a new lot. If the not, in the zoning regulations, under the section for non-conformities, four C three D, it states as of a non-conforming use is superseded by a permitted use which shall thereafter conform to the requirements of the district in which it is located. And then the non-conforming use shall thereafter not be resumed. Just because they sold the lot doesn't mean the property that what the previous owner abandoned becomes unabandoned. We reverse that. And I submit that the owner abandoned the non-conforming two family use by making the application that indicated the property would have a conforming use and provided non-controversial information to obtain the additional conforming single family building lot. So they had a building lot that performed to the single family size, they had a building lot that performed to two family size. Remember that the two family use, while it's currently non-conforming, was allowed at the time of the subdivision with the increased lot size. The commission may have considered the lot size was appropriate for an existing three family use to occupy that that site. Had they had the opportunity and known about it. There's nothing in the record about the subdivision because it wasn't applied for. They weren't given that information, they didn't know it was a three family, they weren't, it wasn't part of the application. It was presented to them that it was a two family. And therefore, there wouldn't have been any conditions because it was inaccurately represented and they didn't know about it. Move along to Mr. Reniello buying the property in two thousand seven. And the ownership later being transferred to Lower Lane LLC two thousand eleven. Mr. Reniello is the principal of Lower Lane LLC. So for the Connecticut State Business Lookup, so that same owner from two thousand seven, basically. It should be recognized that it's the same owner. However, with those transfers of title, two opportunities to perform a due diligence search. The map showing it as a two family, which we rely upon, is documented in the land records and documents in the zoning record as to what is allowed and what is existing and what is on a property. There are two opportunities with those transfers, let alone any other opportunity, but to search the record. Search, do a land record search, do a property search. Have financial institutions, financial institutions contact our office every week for zoning information. They do not rely on an assessor's file for zoning information. They rely on a deed search, title search, which is certified, and the zoning office to confirm zoning. The the proper zoning on a property and the proper and what is the record uses that are allowed. Standard due diligence would have found the map, the land records, the map says it's a two family. And in twenty eighteen, this owner applied for a building permit, an electrical permit. They were instructed, further notes in the file. I was a bit fairly scared at the time that they, no, they didn't need a third, a third meter. They need, they were going to apply for an owner's meter. We noted on the application, it was for an owner's meter. No claim to the number of units in the property, not what they applied for, not what they were asking for. They were asking for an owner's meter, something we don't, you know, that is typical and is allowed. But we noted it on the application that it was for an owner's meter, not an indication of the number of units allowed in the house. And noted on there in my handwriting, because I was the zoning officer at the time, zoning officer, that the if the applicant was going to pursue any claims for a three family, they would have to submit documents so that I could make a determination, the zoning officer could make a determination. That was not pursued, they did not do that. There was no controversy, there was no reason to look deeper into it at the time. They weren't claiming a three family use, at least not within the laws of the zoning office. However, with that information, this owner should have known the number of dwelling units and issues since their purchase of two thousand seven, had they got due diligence. Right up through the twenty eighteen permit when they chose not to pursue the determination. And instead, they chose also to stay off the radar, radar as perhaps the original or the nineteen ninety eight owner had done by not having the town know what the occupancy was. Not bring it to zoning detention and continue to potentially use the income producing multi-family occupancy. In response to the exhibits that we received this afternoon, and that you just received at the meeting, I just did looking through those documents. The first item being photos, interior stamps that do not indicate occupancy. And a door with a lock at the top of the stairs. Any interior door could be changed to an exterior door with a lock if it has framing. You can put a door and a lock back. Houses, despite the occupancy, have multiple exterior doors, hardware, hardware store house numbers. Real estate listings, they show the real estate listings. Frequently, we we don't police the real estate listings. However, frequently, we do find there's a real estate listing or an agent or a financial institution where someone comes in and they say, the listing says it's a, they have an accessory dwelling unit, the listing says it's a three family, the listing says it's a two family. The listing says you can have a business here, can I? They come to zoning, zoning sets the the zoning regulations control what's allowed. No one confirmed any of the zoning information with this zoning official. I know nothing in the record, I established the street file system for the zoning files many years ago. Been here since two thousand twelve. And when I was going to do all that research to find out what a property's read on history was, pull old assessors cards, even needing to go to the basement and get them or go get old, old zoning files. I was going to keep that record for the next time somebody asked me the same question. I wasn't going to have to do all that research again. So those files were established. Nothing in the record indicates that the zoning compliance letter was requested. Any confirmation for three family use or any other representation request for a two versus a three family. And therefore, those transactions occurred without that due diligence from my standpoint. There may have been other things that that can, that show that satisfied their their needs and their closing fees. Their needs and their closing fees. Again. As it was not called to the planning and zoning commission's attention, that it was a three family house that existed there, the applicant did not apply, letting them know it was a three family, so. A review of, of that, they showed it was a three, a two family. Then there was no reason for the. Assessor's office and the zoning office to communicate that there was an issue and a problem with the records. So I maintain that the. Owner of the property who applied for his benefit to subdivide the property. Abandoned the three family that had existed. That had been on the property since prior to, possibly since prior to zoning. And. They moved forward with the attempt of having the town think they had a two family.
Maureen has been very helpful on that, this is not Maureen, but. I would point out, she's not talking about eight dash two Connecticut State statute, she's not talking about intent, she's not talking about a property right. That we took a fifty thousand dollar hit on because Maureen didn't like the due diligence and prior, prior owners may have done. The fact of the matter is, you do a title search. The title, there's no problem with the title, it's not gonna show up in a title search. And, but the controlling thing is eight dash two of the statute. There was a mistake made about the two family, read the, read the case I cited. It's, we, we aren't giving up our property right because they don't think we, we did due diligence, it didn't matter. The electrical permit was pulled by the electrician, not by these folks. And, um. You know, I just, I just, okay, that's her opinion, but the only thing where I think you're being a little bit misguided is to say, well, in ninety eight, when they put the subdivision. It could form with the two family requirements, there were no three family area requirements. So my position would be that's why he put it on there to show we complied with what's required for today's zoning in ninety eight, i.e. a two family. In terms of size, I think it was seventy five, seventy four feet or whatever, because it was no further need to go to a larger lot. Because it was a non-conforming three family. The town's position here is to, to eviscerate their property right based upon one piece of paper, not due diligence, not. Uh, did you call me and ask about this or that? And to me, uh, that's just not gonna stand the test of the law. Again, that's my opinion, I think, uh. I, I'm concerned, I want everybody to read everything, maybe, you know, I'm a little hesitant tonight about quoting without the people who aren't here reading everything. Uh, there's, there's a lot of documentation here on both sides. And I, I can't come back next Tuesday, but I certainly think that that's important for my clients.
I just go ahead and give another thing, just Maureen, about. The two thousand eighteen permit, if we didn't come back, if we didn't apply for this, we didn't ask for the change of this. We bought it as a three family, we knew it's a three family, there's never any question that it wasn't a three family. When the two thousand eighteen owner's meter was done, we did not pull the permit, the electricians did. So if there was any questions raised then. It was done through electricians, the electricians did not come back to us and say, hey, the three meters. First floor, second floor, and third floor were there prior to us purchasing the house. There's nothing about saying that we, we should have asked for a third, that we added a third, fourth meter, those three meters were there. Okay, from when we purchased on it, there was absolutely no indication that it was a two family. Between our real estate issue, the land cards, the, the town card, the assessors, even going back to the fire marshal. There was no indication that it was, so why, why would we even think about coming to zoning and apply for a variance from a two to three family? I don't understand that, that doesn't make any sense. We bought it as a three family, we knew it's a three family, we did not pull the permit, so if there's a question back then, it should have been addressed to us as the owners, and it never was. Thank you.
I am actually looking for another section of the regulations, but in response to one of the comments there, as far as the. The map filed on the land records, that's how subdivisions happen, that's how subdivisions occur, that's how lots are created since the establishment of subdivision regulations. A map is reviewed by the planning and zoning commission to divide property. Map. Typically, zoning chart on a map would, would call out an existing non-conforming division. And you have a zoning chart, if this map number thirty forty one does have a zoning table. For the single family, for the one family and the two family, and typically. I'm not saying that every map has it, I, you know, I wanna, you know, but my experience has been that the maps show. An asterisk and it says existing, existing non-conforming. Two family use would have been existing non-conforming. Because two family have, the three family houses were not allowed in that zone at that time of subdivision. I do believe that the map would show up in a search of the property. Due diligence search, it's filed on the, on the land records. In the town clerk's ball. For the deeds. And the, and the non-conformity of, as I indicated, the planning and zoning commission may have. Made a determination as to whether or not. The lot sizes were appropriate for. More families, a three family, we don't, we can't hold that because they didn't apply telling them that it was a three family.
Nice question, why, why, so, explain why, why are the assessor cards that were not there to reflect that? We're saying that's been used since two thousand seven. Why we said three family, even four family some points until this year.
The.
Several assessments.
So the, the rebound company typically sends out, or the assessors typically go out. And assessors cards are written for what that they see, you get taxed on what is. Not what is, um. Permitted unless now, we now have mechanisms where we're looking at electronic records, we're talking to each other, we've gotten more and more of these inconsistencies, but typically. You, you put in a, um, bathroom without a, a permit and the. Rebound team discovers it, you get taxed on that bathroom, but you may or may not have ever got the permit and whether or not that communication happens when we have the. I know the number of housing units we have, but. I want to speak it, um, you know, that number of housing units, you know, eight, eight thousand. Over eight thousand dwelling units. You know, I have eight thousand assessor's cards, plus the, plus all the assessors cards for every other property. Um, you know, they don't get looked at by each other, assessors cards are, or what you're taxed on what is. The grant account, you get taxed on the grant account, you know. What is.
So to be clear, the town's position said the assessors cards are not authoritative for the, for the approved zoning use.
True. And you. A typical. Agent or. Um, someone searching the property for, for instance, financing. We get these requests on a regular basis, they come to zoning to ask whether, hey, I see this is a. This example, I see this is a three family house on the assessors card, or they're financing it for a three family house. Can you please confirm it, right? I, you get dozens of, dozens of requests. Or confirming the zoning, you go to the zoning office to confirm.
This is the nature of the May Fourth letter from attorney Harvey, right? Where he was asking you to confirm.
Yes, exactly. I would like to speak to the timeline a bit because you will find in. Yeah, and I didn't think it would come up, so I did wipe out the letter number, but attorney Harvey had sent me an email to ask me to delay. Um, number seventeen email from Stephanie Garcia, signed by attorney John Harvey to F two C dated February fifteenth, two thousand two, asking the opinion on the. Occupancy zoning request be put on hold, so you have to, they, the testimony indicated that the town has. Linked into this process, the, we were asked to hold on that. They got the letter, they filed the appeal process. Um, within the fifteen days, not that stipulated on the record as well, not let's follow accurately.
Also, to be clear, on the nineteen ninety eight subdivision, planning and zoning commission, uh, review. That the. Two family use was. An appropriate use. And that. This is town's position in your comments that the. Proper time. To highlight the non-conforming three family use on. That proposed subdivision. Because the property and subdivision from it. That was the forum that would have had to show. As a non-conforming three family.
I, I understand your question clearly, yes, I believe the occupancy was misrepresented or, or rather. Abandoned with saying. Applying on the land, applying for, applying on the land records for two family in that house, that structure.
In your opinion, would the existing owners of steroids at that time, had they wanted. To declare the three family, it would have been an additional hurdle on the planning and zoning determination to get over, to allow the subject. I think you said that in your comments that, that it would have had to have been separate discussion.
I, I believe it would have prompted a discussion. I don't know that it would have been a hurdle or not, I don't know what their determination would have been at that time, but I believe it would have prompted. A decision. To determine whether or not it was appropriate to, um, reduce the lot size or not be forming use.
Okay, this is last time, I forget, it's true, we had a three family zoning back then, ninety seven.
None of the single, none of the, our zoning regulations are divided and have been since before nineteen ninety eight. Into single family residential and single and two family residential, A, section five A and section five B. The single and two family residential. You go above the two family, the classification turns to multi-family. And we allow that. Under the different zoning requirements than not in those songs.
For the questions, how? On that, here is Judge and jury, uh, we're here to just identify whether or not the planning and zoning enforcement officer. Did the correct thing as far as following the guidelines that the town has. And, uh, you know, I, I guess if we're gonna take this up for a vote, we have to vote on that, I, I cannot vote. Uh, as you all know, we have four people who have the ability to vote. I don't know what attorney, uh.
No, we have this color, your, your pictures.
No, the blank one, I can, I can show you on my phone.
Yes. So the, the three unit ones are, the three. Oh, three, there's three, there's three, sorry, yeah, sorry, there's two there. Two. This is the owner and three meter on the side. And the owner's meter was, probably was told in twenty eighteen.
Please email me that so that I can put your address in color.
Sure. I have one other, I'll just, just for the thing, sure, I mean, I have a video of, of the stairwell front and back. Um, that shows you how it's. Set up, that it's not altered in, in any way. I can, I can send it to you.
If you send them to me, if the internet's back up, I should be able to open it and put it on the recording.
So it's possible, like you said, the assessors go out and they, you know, they do what they see, it's possible they saw these three meters forever, that's why it stayed whole, three family in the cards.
Or they, or they inspected the interior, or they relied on a figure as far. The training of, I, from personal experience, I was a, um, rebound inspector at one time when I was fresh out of school. Got in the house, you got in the house, if you didn't get in the house, you might look in the window, you might have a, um. You look at the old card and you see if things are changing. Different training from different companies as well as the assessors here ourselves. Our staff assessors also do inspections.
How long have you owned the house?
We, we've owned it since two thousand, two thousand and seven.
Okay, so how can you definitively say that this house has never been altered in any way to make it through town?
Because of the way that the layout is, I'm a licensed home contractor, and I, I have all the property in town. And you can see, wait, and I had walked into the town zoning, come and walk it, and I had, the videos could show. The stairwell going up the front and the stairwell going up the back.
But couldn't a good builder, a good contractor make it look that way, I know, I put a, if you walked into my house now as it is and as it stands when I bought it in nineteen eighty eight. You would, you would. If you would, you have not a single thing in my house, that's the same.
You can look at, one of the indicators is the page of the carpeting that's still there, that carpet is very old. Uh, stairwell, it's hardwood floors, they're not stained or painted, they're definitely pre-two thousand and seven, uh, pre-two thousand. But not saying they're original, I'm saying, I'm saying they look original, because you can usually tell, there's some indications.
Not what I'm saying, what I'm saying is that you cannot, that, that definitely conclude that it was never. Not meant to be a three family and that it was not worked on and changed to make it a three family at some point.
There, there's also no way of knowing that, you know. Any, any evidence that it was abandoned, as, they're saying that it was abandoned, there's nothing saying that it was abandoned. I mean, the meters, you look at the house, you can see that the pictures of the meters always been there, the field card, I don't know if that's the same as tax assessor's card. But that's always been as a, this is the same thing, it's been, and it's never been, if, if it was, if the town was to abandon it. Somebody at some point should have changed it.
Well, these zoning cards, these these, these, not this one, the assessors' card, they have read from ones I see in here, have read anything from two-family, three-family, and four-family, and one.
Great, but the original, the original conversation started off that they was never a three-family. Okay, showing that it was a three-family. And it always continued, even Mr. Saroyz, who lived on the third floor, used it as a three-family, he sold it as a three-family. We purchased as a good faith from the records as a three-family. We're not asking to modify it to add another four or anything like that, we're just asking that it's yeah, it's not forming a three-family as it was originally built and maintained. And I'd be happy to show you, I mean, to walk through, that's what, and somebody with, some building would would see the the original railings, posts, beams, the flooring, all that, that there is, there, there's no alterations that would make it a from a two-family to a three-family.
Right. Respectfully, the, my hearing, the town stipulated that the three-family use was in place. So it's really not an issue that we agree, that they have agreed that it was a three-family and it was a use as a three-family. But that in nineteen ninety-eight, that it was, it was abandoned at that use. So I I don't know why we're spending time about how the house was built.
Morning, yeah.
I I was just gonna clarify that, that I will not take exception to it having been at one time a three-family.
Understood.
But that the owner will delete, abandon that three-family use with their application to the planning and zoning. Are you looking for guidance?
Yeah, I'm just trying to find out whether or not uh they would like us to vote on this, or, you know, I.
I mean, I think we ought to have five, five members, because even the record and the people, the people who are here tonight should see the other exhibits. Read over what's there, and then, you know, make your, make your, your opinion is your opinion, just follow it. I'll try and move that thing for next week, if that's possible, I'll let Florida know in the morning, I don't know if I can.
Yeah, we, you beat your interview.
It's okay, maybe we'll, if we can down the road. There's no claim on our part of inaction, whether there's some theoretical timeframe, so that.
We would be a a extension. Yes. Yeah.
We agree to that.
Time available.
We agree to that.
It'll be September twenty seventh.
August twenty.
There's no, it's being scheduled.
September twenty seventh.
You do have the ability to also consider other special.
No.
I'm ready to vote.
I'm gonna be away August anyways, I mean, I, I vote, I but I know if you want to have a special people vacation, August.
August is gonna be very, I'm on a, I'm taking back the vacation of having surgery in the back.
I, the reason I put up the calendar, I I don't throw up anything including tomorrow, but you know, there's a place for the season, I see tomorrow as well, so.
Twenty twenty seven for the season. So waiting on the odds.
Yeah, that is out there.
They look that way.
Attorney Harvey has indicated that he would like five months, so the issue that we have is we can't proceed to late because the chairman has not reviewed the evidence that was submitted from the last meeting, so. It is scheduled for September twenty seventh.
I think that was to be confirmed, because I said it's.
Do you have the time to reach over? Yeah, like you say, it's when it There is a certain circle of thought that the parties change in that to a longer period of time. It's time to because there is no one.
Right.
Oh, actually. Game of Thrones, like we wanted to do, energy. So I did it, it's June twenty eighth. Yeah. Yes, that's fine, that's fine, that's more than fine. So, uh procedurally, someone would, if that's what you're inciting or what was just a breach in while I was pretending to do math, um is to make a motion to continue the, to next regularly scheduled meeting on September, I already forgot the date, twenty seventh.
I make a motion that we continue this meeting till the September twenty seventh meeting. Second.
The discussion, so this is, what was discussed was whether it would jeopardize an automatic approval if we went too long, is that a part of the?
Yeah, that's a definite.
The larger, the larger issue for the applicant is the fact that they need four people to agree to reverse. So you want to give them an opportunity of having this fifth person. So that's.
But that's, but by extending it so far, did it cause another conflict or an automatic?
No, there is no automatic approval. Or we should move on.
Hi.
Hi.
Make motion to adjourn. Second.